Okay, good evening, everybody, and I'd like to just take a brief opportunity to welcome the planning board and the finance committee to this workshop this evening. And I also would like to take a moment to congratulate Councilor Lee Clement for being chosen as the new chair of the finance committee. So, thank you, Lee, for your service. So Dennis, presenters for both of these, who are they gonna be? I don't see that noted.
I'll be presenting the LC, excuse me, the LCIP presentation.
Okay, and you're, you're breaking up really bad. You're breaking up real bad, kind of positive, so you look good now, but just keep that in mind. And whenever you're ready, Dennis.
Okay, am I coming through okay right now?
You are, yeah.
Okay, all right. I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen here, real quick. Are you able to see my screen at this point?
We are.
Okay. All right. So, good evening, mayor and city councilors, members of the finance committee and planning board, welcome to the FY22 capital improvement program presentation. As you know, on an annual basis, we're required to present a five-year capital improvement plan. This plan is really designed to lead into the budget process, so you have your capital improvement projects before you, as you work through the numbers, you know, from the budget as well as through this plan. Ultimately, the action on allocation will come at a later time, so tonight, you're really getting the, the full five-year plan presentation. I have myself here, Heather Hunter, for questions, you know, following the presentation, anything that comes up, as well as some staff in the audience. I also wanted to note that, I believe Superintendent Jake Langley is in the audience and attending as well, and will be available for questions, should there be any, related to the school projects at the end of their presentation. So, we'll go ahead and get started here. The FY22, FY26 plan calls for $193 million in projects and $176 million from city resources. Of that proposed use of local reads, of local sources, the left column here shows for FY22, I'll run through that, on the right side shows the total plan, you know, budget for the five-year plan. Running through for the FY22, city bond issue is proposed at $9,926,391. City operating budget, $157,200. School bond issue is, is proposed at $5,495,000. Water bond issue is $2,200,000. Our water operating budget, $500,000. Sewer operating budget, another $85,000. Our sewer bond issue is $2,525,000. Sewer impact fees come up to $120,000. Stormwater operating budget, another $500,000. And our stormwater bond issue is $2,200,000. And again, on the far right, gives you the total planned costs, and there's a detail in all of your buckets, booklets, you have the full detail, five-year plan, broken down for you. What this chart shows is our proposed bond issues broken out over the five-year plan. There's, I just walked through FY22, I think it's worth noting, some, some highlights in FY23, FY24, and FY25, we have some significant projects, as you could see, the, the figures there go up pretty significantly. FY23, we have the Lincoln Street parking garage, the remainder, you'll see a breakdown for FY22, that also includes the design of the Lincoln Street parking garage, but that is a $12.6 million project included in FY23. Also included in FY23 is Main Street Fire Station, continue replacing on our fire stations at about $5.9 million. On the school side, the Longley School door and security upgrades, they're included, the Dingly basement redesign, as well as some high school facility upgrades. Again, those are broken down in more detail, and were available for, for additional questions following this. FY24, City Lisbon Street Fire Station starts, that, that continues on, and then it also calls for the police building at about $34 million. FY25, then, excuse me, that police building is just as a reference, this was the recent presentation you received on the assessment, and that's on the follow-up to that. For FY25, I think notable project there would be the CSO storage tank at $6 million that we are continuing to work on, and that project, like I said, is projected for FY25. This chart really, this is just showing the same information graphically, as you can see, the, the three FY22 is there and broken down, but FY23, 24 certainly have, and 25 have some significant projects planned in there. Still ongoing work with those, but that's just, again, a graphic showing that. Outstanding debt issued and authorized as of December 31st, 2020. Apologize, I need to move something else, I can't see this. For the city side, for outstanding debt issued and authorized, we have $40,991,000, excuse me, $91,604. For the school, it sits at $67,467,904. Important to note that $52,832,201 in debt associated with the school project is actually new school construction is paid by the state.
Dennis?
Yes.
Could I just, so there, the number in the slideshow that we're going through is different than the, the paper version, the paper version says 47 million is associated with new school construction?
I'm gonna ask Heather, is that something you can help out with on response?
Let me look that up, I'm wondering if this didn't get updated, like the, I would think the 47 million in the memo is correct.
Thank you so much.
Footnote didn't get updated on the presentation, because the principal would be lower.
Thank you, Heather, apologize for that. On the water side, we have $19,495,144 on the sewer side, another seven, a little over 17 million, and then on the stormwater side, $12,270,204. It's important to note that the user fees under these programs, under these divisions do support and pay for the debt service on all of this. Tiff revenue, special revenue, $895,868, probably the most notable or tiff associated with this is the Walmart tiff. It's also important to note that this funding does support our economic development department and some other economic development activities related to that. Authorized unissued debt is $47,723,000. What these are is approved projects that we have not issued the bond yet, it's basically, we don't want to borrow before, ahead of need, and what we try to do is issue these bonds when we know a project is got, is close to being constructed in a relatively short timeframe. We have a total of $206,276 in outstanding debt issued. Debt service as a percentage of our budget currently, the FY21, excuse me, operating budget, the city sits at 19.6%, the school at 9.4% for a total of 12.6%. I would just simply say that, you know, 19.6% on the city side is certainly, we'd like to see that lower, that's certainly an effort that we'd always like to bring down, but it is notable that, you know, not too many years ago, the city was in the low twenties, you know, 20%, and then I think that they've been, we've been successful in bringing that down, and we'll get into some of those efforts, I think, in the, in the later in the presentation. What, what this chart is showing is our outstanding general fund debt. Wanted just note, because the finance director, I think, wanted me to know this, is, it's a 2005, FY20, 2005 is noted on here on the chart, because that was our peak year. I think it's important to note on here that if you look at the trend, we certainly had a downward trend in this, in this category, which is very positive, seeing some increase in FY19 and FY20, but again, you know, showing another, you know, dip or drop down in FY21. So, certainly moving in the right direction, in terms of our outstanding general fund debt. Debt management, as I said, there's been, you know, kudos to our finance director and previous city administrator, Ed Barrett, for their work, I think, on, on managing our debt, and really, in, in being able to demonstrate some of the trends I just showed you in, in our downward trend of how our debt looks. I, I'll ask Heather to speak to some of this as well, but I'll, I'll run through this. Some of the efforts have been, you know, related to lowering our debt authorization limit to 80%, that's also kudos to some existing councilors, mayor, previous councils took, took that action, and I think that's had a significant effect, impact on our ability to manage our debt going forward. Refinancing debt when possible, I think our finance department and our finance director have done a wonderful job in more managing that and taking those opportunities when they're there. Move reoccurring expenditures into the operating budget, this is a challenge for us, it has been, as much as we'd like to move more in, things, items such as street paving, vehicle replacement, these are ideal to be putting into an operating budget, but at the same time, we're trying to maintain a reasonable tax rate, and with competing demands on the city, it just has not happened, maybe at the level we'd like it to, and I think that's just an ongoing effort that will continue to, to move those into the operating budget when we can. And I think the city and school use of unallocated fund balance after rainy day requirements are met is something that we should continue, I think we've had success with that, and I think we should just continue that. At this point, I guess I'd open it up to Heather, is there any, excuse me, Finance Director Hunter, is there anything further you want to add to that?
No, I, I, the only, I guess, the one thing I will share with you, the city's getting ready to do another bond sale, the sale takes place in early February. I am planning on refunding two issues, it doesn't have the significant savings that we saw five and six years ago, but we're still looking at a present value savings of both of those issues of well over $1.3 million.
Thank you, Heather, that's great. Future year debt service requirements, and basically, what this chart shows you here is FY21, our current is $8,887,556. I think it's worth noting, if you, going into FY22, you see a pretty significant drop in our debt service requirements, and that's due to a bond retiring from about, I can't remember if it was 15 or 20 years ago, I know that there was many municipalities throughout the state had to support the state retirement system with some funding, and we did that through a bond, and the good news is that is retiring, which is certainly dropping our debt service requirements significantly, as you see on the chart, going from FY21 into FY22, and you also see a downward trend in our debt, debt service and in the out-years as well in this plan. Running through a, a brief summary here of our, go into a little bit more detail into our FY22, specifically into our FY22 projects that we have. Starting out with the airport, typically between the, the city of Lewiston and Auburn, we split projects usually 50/50, but there is some exceptions, and the projects you see here, these exceptions do come with the federal funding, and so our city resources are reduced significantly on these project, not at the, not required to meet the 50%. The reconstruction of the East Ramp aircraft parking apron is a total project of $1,360,000, and our city issue, proposed city issue, bond issue is $228,750. The airport master plan update is a three, again, a $300,000 total project, but that also includes some support and FAA funding towards that project, and the city resources is $7,500 for that project. On the transit committee and the transit side, this has been an annual request of $50,000 per year, their request continues, and this goes towards bus replacement, average bus is a little over $400,000, so the, this has gone a long way in maintaining the bus system and maintaining services by less interruptions and those types of things from vehicle breakdowns. Citywide revaluation, you'll note in the plan that there's $128,500 for the full five years of the plan, and this is, so that the city revaluation will be broken up over the years to come in pieces, and I would encourage us in the future budget discussions to have some, you know, detailed discussions with our chief assessor, Bill Healy, around the revaluation and that process and what that may look like. Economic and community development, canal ownership projects, as you know, we own the, we are now the owners of our canals throughout the city of Lewiston, and this project would continue the efforts of the cleanup, as you've seen, if you've noticed by Samar Payne Park, some significant cleanup efforts have been there, made there, and this is gonna continue that effort on, on, on other canals and continue that work and cleanup and installing fences and removing unsafe bridges, those types of things. Riverfront Island implementation, $150,000, that is to extend the, we just put in the new bridge leading into Samar Payne Park, this will improve the walkway leading from the bridge to the trestle, and continue that, again, that implementation plan that's, that's been established. The Riverfront Island master plan update, we've seen significant activity in terms of some development interest, you know, whether it be the LA Museum, LA, new site, the Pamco Building, the Pump House, also the Continental Mill across the, the canal there, the, the staff are looking to bring a consultant in to update our master plan with all of these new projects in mind and different activity, as well as taking a look at the Lincoln and Oxford Street corridor and development plan there. The Red Shop Shell Preservation, this is the red building that is on the northern side of Samar Payne Park, by the, over the canal, it's in pretty bad shape, this is really to, you know, preserve it, put, put some work into it and, and on the outside shell and securing the building. Continental Mill River Path, River Walk Path, this is to establish a River Walk Path by the Continental Mill, as well as this includes a crossbridge, footbridge over the Cross Canal there between the Continental Mill and Samar Payne Park. And that, excuse me, is $180,000. Bates Mill Five Environmental Cleanup is $432,000. Back FY20, the city did, was successful in receiving a $500,000 Brownfield Grant, the total mitigation cost for the, the environmental hazard cleanup on this, on Bates Mill Number Five, is estimated between $375,000 to a little over $1 million. And they're also worth noting that the city has also allocated about $100,000 each year in the two previous CDBG budgets towards this environmental effort as well, and, and I believe they would be eligible for additional CDBG possibly. Lincoln Street Garage Phase Two, this is the design and beginning construction of the next Lincoln Street Parking Garage, based on the demand letter that we've received from the developer. What, what we basically, these conversations are continuing and will continue to work through this, but it's also important to note that this project would require a referendum vote by the, by the public to, in order to go through, because of the size of it, if you look at the out-years, I believe it's a, another 12 and $12.6 million in construction cost for the, for this parking garage on top of that. MIS Department Technology Upgrades, this just involves a replacement of one of six servers and one of four sand pools that remain, keeps us in compliance with our CGIS, and you know, this is, stands for criminal, I believe it's the Criminal Justice Information Services, or Information Security, excuse me, cert, certification that we're required to maintain, and these, these upgrades are just a part of that, that certification. Fire Department, the self-contained breathing apparatus replacement for $225,000, we, we were notified this year that our current vendor that provides these to us will no longer be supplying the, the units that we have been, which requires us to replace all of our units in the coming years, because we will obviously not have the service and parts and those types of things will become obsolete, so we really need to, you know, this is an obviously important piece of equipment for our firefighters, so this is just really getting us on that replacement schedule. Also included here is our Main Street Next Steps and our Main Street Fire Station Replacement Project at $250,000. Public Works Buildings and Facilities, we have, if you recall, last year, we started a, a security, entrance security upgrades with our police department to bring them in compliance with their CLER requirements, and this is really the next phase, which would focus on City Hall, and then we would look at continuing this expansion into other city facilities in the coming years. Canal Street Parking Garage Repairs, this is really just $220,000 worth of, you know, repairs as needed in terms of joint repairs, replacement, crack repair, ceiling of, of the ground level, and some new lighting, new lighted exterior signage for the parking garage at Canal Street. Public Works Facilities Master Plan, this would bring in a consultant to review, very similar to what we've done with our fire as police, and now looking at Public Works, the facility on Adams Avenue, and, and the needs and future needs and, and that, we would end up with a report very similar to what we've just seen from the police department. Public Works Roof, Building Roof Memory Replacement at $380,000. The Public Library HVAC Upgrades, another $100,000, this will replace six existing rooftop units that are, I believe, somewhere around 20 years old, and another couple of them may be 24 years old, so they are certainly at end of life and due for replacement. Public Works Combined Sewer Overflow Projects, what we have is a CSO separation in various areas throughout the city for $500,000. What this is gonna be doing is looking to reduce flows at our Water Street Storage Tank, Gully Brook Outfall, Jepson Brook and Lopka, this will reduce the overall storage requirement that, for the, for the storage that we need to build at Lopka, leading into the next project, the CSO Storage at Lopka for $300,000. In addition to the work I just talked about, we have to install two additional small CSO tanks to eliminate overflows. Moving on, Public Works Highway, we have a Burke Street paving and sidewalk rehabilitation at $420,000. Street Crosswalk Report Implementation Plan, $75,000, just as a reminder or refresher, 2018, the city contracted with HNTB Engineering to do a full review and assessment and provide recommendations on all crosswalks within the city. Those were broken down into priorities, tier one, tier two, three, and four. The total improvements recommendations came around $1.1 million, and what, what we, what you will see, what this project of the 75,000 is looking to address most of the tier two, or, or as many as we can of the tier two priorities, the tier one priorities will be addressed in some upcoming projects on Sabatys and Main Street, where bulk of those recommendations fell within that project scope, so they'll be addressed through that project. Sidewalk Maintenance and Rehabilitation, this is just, you know, a variety of sidewalk updates and, and that throughout the city, 452,000, those are broken down again in your, in your full plans. Street Maintenance Program, $3,181,341 for the total plan for this FY22, and again, there's a detailed list contained in your booklets, as well as on the, in the LCIP plan online. Municipal Garage and Equipment Replacement, this is, there's a detailed list as well in a priority order of vehicle and, and equipment needs from our Public Works Department, and again, that's broken down in our booklets and will be online. Public Works Open Spaces, Lou for the, for Kennedy Park, what this is, is a public bathroom, it's a, this is being proposed as, as a follow-up through some just recent discussions of addressing some needs and of, for homeless throughout the community, public bathrooms, public showers, and, you know, warming stations were the high priority from the city council, or the priority from the council, and this is, again, a proposal to address the public bathrooms in the downtown, and we would propose putting it in Kennedy Park. Pickleball Courts, this is a proposal to put in four pickleball courts behind Temple Street Fire Station, the new Temple Street Fire Station, it includes parking, light, lighting with timers, and this is, I believe, a need, a demand on the, that the, the community's been asking for, and so will be, that, that be again, behind the Temple Street Fire Station. Public Works Street Lights, Traffic Signal Upgrades, basically what you're looking at here for the breakdown of the $220,000, this will replace the mast arms at Chestnut and Canal Street Intersections, as well as adding some backup battery to different intersections, as well as some updates on, updating some traffic cameras throughout the city in different intersections. Street Light Upgrades, this is really to upgrade additional lights, there was some, some lights that were not upgraded to LED, those will be taken care of, as well as any other repairs and general maintenance and upkeep for those. Truck Scale Replacement and Scale Management Upgrades at our Solid Waste Facility at $300,000, this will replace our current truck scales, as well as include a coal barn cover over our, our, our scales at the Solid Waste Facility. School Department, I'll run through these quickly, we have an LMS, excuse me, Lewiston Middle School Mechanical and HVAC Upgrades at $3,343,000, get the Dingly Building Basement Ventilation for $600,000, District Wide Security Camera Upgrade for another $412,000, paving district-wide, that's at a variety of schools, being addressed through that project, $510,000. The Lewiston Middle School Roofing Replacement for another $170,000, and Montello School Roofing Replacement for $260,000. Sewer Division, Rehabilitation of Old Sanitary Sewer Manes, this is an ongoing project, as you know, some of our underground infrastructure, and that is, is getting old, and this is just a matter of updating these as needed, in, in, in variety, again, there's a breakdown in the, in the plan that does describe the locations in, in some of these, and there are also work when we can with our paving and, and construction projects to, to work these types of replacements in, as well in those. Equipment Replacement Plan is $85,000, and that's to upgrade some, so upgrade some trucks and equipment in our sewer division. Collection System and Inspection, this is a process of inspecting our, our sewer mains and our manholes, you know, for, for, and, and as well as video, videoing those, and getting that information so we can understand, you know, where replacements are needed or problems are, as well as, you know, any, addressing any issues as they come, come up. Pump Station Replacement, this would install generators at four pump stations in the city, as well as a full replacement of the pump station with a generator at Kensington Terrace. Criticality and Risk Assessment of Collection Systems, this would be bringing in a consultant to assist us utilizing some of this collection data from this, you know, from our stormwater inspections, our sewer inspections, and really developing a risk assessment program so that we can prioritize the, the, addressing our collection system needs based on our risk assessment. It's, again, it's a, it would be involved bringing in a consultant and working with our staff to develop that system. Stormwater Division, Old Webster Road Culvert Replacement, this is $50,000 towards the design of that culvert replacement, if you noted in your plan for FY23, there's another $500,000 planned for this project to replace this culvert, once the design is complete. Storm Drain Inspection, 400,000, just like the sewer side, that this was a program involved of inspecting our storm drains and, and, yes, all our storm drains and pipes, and cammering those and taking that information and, and addressing needs and being able to, again, utilize that in our risk assessment of our collection system, as we work through that project. Storm Drains for Road Rehabilitation Projects, this is $500,000, this is, these are coordinated with our road. This is, these are coordinated with our road construction projects and replacing storm drains as needed. Again, in coordination with our projects, road major road construction projects. Jepson Brook, excuse me, Jepson Brook. Channel Upgrades at $1.1 million. This is Phase Four of a six-phase project to increase the stormwater flows on the Jepson Brook from a 10-year storm to a 50-year storm. And Phase Four replaces a box culvert at the intersection of Central and Brought Street. Culvert Replacement Program. This is $50,000 towards replacing of culverts, whether it be in coordination with projects or, you know, as as needed, just depending on needs. But it's $50,000 towards a culvert replacement throughout the city. The Hartbrook Water Quality Restoration would install this project at $200,000 would install a bioretention system within the Lewiston Industrial Park to improve in an effort to improve the water quality. As well as the project also includes some some erosion control efforts, some plantings and some other landscaping. Under our Water Division, we have the Lewiston Skater Program. This is involves connecting our Lewiston Skater Program to fiber, increasing security and performance of our system. If you're not familiar with our Skater Program, it's basically a monitoring system of our water system tanks and other systems that it can be done from one central location within our water department. Distribution Water Main Replacement and Rehabilitation at $2,200,000. And again, this is, we we work these in with our major road construction projects, but this is to update our water mains. We have some very old pipes under our roads and this is an ongoing effort that we just continue to do and will continue probably for years to come until we have everything up to up to standards. Equipment Replacement Program, another $50,000 towards replacement. With leaves a pickup truck is for the equipment that they're looking for under the Water Division. The Meter Program involves another $350,000 and this is just updating the meters that we, you know, for, you know, throughout the city. And that's just an ongoing effort that's been going on for a few years. I'm actually going to, on this point, I think Heather likes to cover this next slide because this is where we start to talk about where what we actually have for authorized limits in terms of this plan and F Y 22. Heather, do you want to walk them through this one?
Sure. Just to serve as a reminder, the city council approved and it was effective for the L C I P of 2011, the 80% debt limitation rule. And the calculation is set out that you use the prior three fiscal years principal payment that is supported from the tax base. So you will see the city and school that is supported from the tax base. We subtract out the three state-supported schools, Connor, Geiger, Pettingill. And then the school Q Z A group, which is also supported, that's related to school construction. That's also supported from the tax base as well as the legacy Coliseum Capital Projects. So once you calculate all of those, your three-year average is nine, a little over $9.2 million. You multiply that times your 80%. So our debt limitation going into the F Y 22 L C I P is $7,405,681.26. Right now, as it stands, presented to you, the tax-supported debt projects total over $15.4 million. So we are a little over $8 million over the debt limitation as we stand right now. And you will see the applicable percentages related to that. So we are about 108% over the limitation. And then I kind of keep prior year's limitation in there just as a reference point. You can see last year, we were about $7,275,000. So our limitation this year has risen slightly. And with the good thing with our aggressive payoff for debt, it keeps our principal payments higher, which allows us not only to incur less interest, but also keeps us in a higher three-year average than if we would take them longer to pay off debt. If we went from a 10-year to the 20-year, that's going to reduce your principal payments, which will reduce this overall limit. So it has a positive impact on this as well.
Thank you, Heather. And this is really just giving the same numbers that Heather just walked you through. And again, showing that we are over the limit of a little over $8 million at this point in the process. Some key dates and events coming up for you at February 2nd will be our L C I P Public Hearing. February 11th, on or before that date, our we will receive or our, excuse me, Finance Committee and Planning Board Recommendations. February 16th, the city council is scheduled to adopt the L C I P Plan. And then March 1st would be the required charter adoption date. And I think at this point, I will stop share screen, sharing my screen and open it up to questions.
If we, if we could, so Dale, can you bring in Superintendent Langless to the meeting? And then just a reminder to councilors, this is a public session, so videos should remain on unless you're excused from the meeting. And once Jake's in, we'll start with questions. So I should, for all of our attendees, so the Finance Committee and the Planning Board Committee that are in attendance, questions are open to both committees, so please don't hesitate to raise your hand. If I don't catch it, I'm sure a staff member will catch it and let us know. So questions are welcome by all. Counselor Ray?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Administrator Dorte, referring back to the PowerPoint that was in here. Some of the city resource numbers are in red and some are in blue. Do those indicate something in particular?
Yes, it was, yes, if they were in red, those were proposed bond issuance for F Y 22. If they're in blue, then they have another funding source. It may be operating budget, it may be general fund. Each one was different, but if they're in blue, then they were not for the bond issuance and the red were just, it was noted at the top of the slide, but may not have been easily seen seen by you guys, but that's.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I couldn't see that. And then my other question that I had written down was, oh, on the debt authorization limit, there is a line Les Connors, Geiger and Pettingill. Could you speak to what is still happening with Pettingill? If that's not a school that's in use or a building?
It's the, what's the new school that replaced Pettingill?
Was it Geiger that replaced Pettingill?
Yes, thank you. It was sold under the Pettingill Bond, that's why.
Okay, so it's then that line is just removing from Connors and Geiger.
No, we we have three schools that were state-funded that that is still outstanding. Those are those three schools. Farwell.
Farwell, okay. There's got to be a third name. And then I think just my last thing is on Public Works. Looking at a Public Works Facilities Master Plan. I, and maybe this is just because I haven't checked in with the the Director of Public Works on this. But I feel like when I entered in my first term, the fire stations and the police building were already in such disrepair and it was still kind of a fight to get those plans done and then get those moved upon, basically. I haven't, I, as I reflect to the Public Works tours that I've gone on, it doesn't seem to rise to the same level. And I'm just wondering if like things have changed over the past three years.
I'm going to actually ask if maybe Dale, maybe Dale, is there anything you can add to? You certainly have some experience over there with the facility, so maybe you can speak to it.
Sure. There are some operational issues, but there's also some facilities issues. The restrooms are really, really not a good place. The garage, there's a number of issues around surrounding the garage, including how we wash our vehicles. We actually wash them in the garage, which deteriorates the garage in general. If we don't wash them, we lose life on the vehicle. So there's a variety of those kind of operational things. There are also some safety issues around garages that were built in the 50s. And, you know, now we're trying to operate in 2000, different, late to mid 2000s and with different equipment. So there is quite a bit. I think either Mary Ann and I certainly could give any councilor a tour and kind of show you the conditions and points of those things out if you wish.
I think that would be super helpful, just because it's been at least three years since I've been to all of the facilities personally. And and justifying that cost would be helpful. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Dote, I'm just curious, how did the Kennedy Park Bathroom get on this list? Because I know as a council, we haven't given any approval on that yet. And I know as being in my ward, I'm very uncomfortable with the idea. I might get there, but until we have a big discussion go over over all the details of what could possibly happen, what our options are, you know, all the benefits and risks that can come with it. Before we can have that discussion, I'm really not comfortable with it being on here. So I'm just kind of curious how it made it on here.
And I'd also defer to the city administrator, but I believe we were asked to look. And this is really to spawn that conversation. Does it belong there? If it isn't there, then it's another year out. So it's really here to have that conversation. As as the administrator said, this is just a list of potential needs that the council will go over and select individually. And that's why it's on the list.
Okay. I would, so I would like a workshop on that specifically, so we can take like a half hour just to talk about that issue specifically. I don't think it's appropriate to talk about it during an L C I P discussion. I have a lot of concerns for it. And again, I might get behind it. I just need more information. That's just how we should do policy. So I, at this point, like I wouldn't approve an L C I P if that's in it without having that discussion as a council beforehand. Previous councils have talked about the idea, and so I think this should be at the council level. So I know I brought up the concerns before, just as a counselor, I have to do my duty for my residents. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Colley?
Thank you, Mayor. Quick question, Dennis. I'm wondering, so we, I see that we are over the 80%. So which mean that are we going to reduce things right now? Or are we going to have another meeting to get to the 80%? Or are we not going to get to the 80%? I'm just.
You you will, so in order for us to exceed, to start with, and this is, I apologize, I should have said this when we got to that point. But in order to override that that rule, we would need a super majority vote of the city council. So you can override the 80%. But what we will, to answer your question, I think more specifically is, we're only starting right now. And I think that you will have continued discussion and continued work on all of these, this subject. And I think you'll be able to, you work through that process to get it down. Our goal would certainly be to get it down within that 80% limit, you know, the best we can. And if not, then in there's ability, then the council would have that option to override that limit if this project, if one see to go above that.
And and just and just a reminder to the the councilors, approving the L C I P does not mean that we approve the projects on it. We, through the budget process, will decide what projects stay and go. So just I wanted to add that. I apologize for interrupting you, Counselor Colley, if you had another question.
I do just, I have few, but I'll just ask one question. Dennis, regarding the pickleball courts, I see that there's four of them. But are they going to be in the same premises? Or are they going to be spread throughout the city? What what is the?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, no, they will be all on the, all four courts will be placed behind the new Temple Street Fire Station. So right behind there with lights, there'll be parking. And I believe even a water, you know, station for filling water bottles and those types of things all included in the design.
Okay, thank you. So I have a quick question for super, the superintendent of schools. So the HABAC upgrades. Isn't there available COVID funds for ventilation upgrades? And would that be considered in that has a possibility for that funding?
Yes, with the with the latest stimulus package, we should get more funding. We don't know the details of that yet, but whatever we could do with those, we will be looking to do that. The middle school piece is really about the heating system that could fail on us at any time. So that's a priority for us.
Okay, all right, thank you. And I apologize, I didn't realize you were on the road when I asked to have you brought in. You're welcome to turn off your video if you feel the need, so don't hesitate to do that.
It's okay. I've pulled over. It's, we had a family meeting, multitasking.
All right, thank you. And then one other question for Heather. So it, right now, out of our current budget, our debt service is 19% of the budget, correct?
That's correct.
And can you just share with the council what the history is there? What's the lowest that we've had recently?
What the council and administration has done since that infamous 2005 peak is keep the funding in the budget, the percentage in the budget at about the same level, which allows us to significantly reduce our overall debt burden and its longevity. So we retain right about, I think we've hovered between 18.75% to right at 20% the last several years. But that's keeping the average payoff at about 7.75 years versus an average before. Back in 2005 was actually 13 years.
Okay, and then what's the best practice for the percentage of your budget that should be towards debt for municipalities?
There is no best practice per se. Ours is considered relatively high by the rating agency. And it's more from the standpoint, they look at the overall debt burden, not necessarily the percentage of the budget. Unfortunately, we've been running such a lean budget, it makes that percentage higher. And it's strictly math. You cut everything else out, that percentage is going to go up. And that's what we've been experiencing the past several years.
And then, so taking that out of account, as a finance director, what will, at what level should we be at that service, what in your professional opinion?
Ideally, with the interest rates heading up again, I would like to see us probably in the neighborhood of 17%.
Okay, all right, thank you.
But with the long-term capital projects we have on their horizon. I mean, we've done all the, I shouldn't say that the inexpensive ones, but essentially they are. We've done all the inexpensive ones. Now we're at the expensive ones, the buildings and those long-term projects that are 20-year life projects.
All right, thank you. Counselor Ray?
Thank you. I figured out what one of my notes meant, so should ask that. On the Lincoln Street Garage Phase Two, you mentioned that this cost-covered design and possibly the start of construction. What would, and it would require referendum vote. What would the timing look like for that? Would it have to be during a general election in November that the referendum vote has to go out? Or could that be independent?
I'm going to ask Heather if she can. If not, I'm going to say maybe we want to bring in Link Jeffers, who might be able to speak a little bit more. But maybe Heather can shed some light on that particularly.
We have done various public referendums, not only with the November election, but we've also done them with the school budget approval. And then you can also always hold a special election, a referendum question. So once we know what the timing looks like, we'll be able to put kind of the calendar of how this project will be adopted. Because it will follow a different track because of that process than all the other normal L C I P projects.
Okay, I think it might be helpful to understand how much of the 952,000 would be expended before it went to referendum.
We can't, we can't spend any of it. It's it's.
Even design?
Even the nine.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you so much. Okay, that's helpful. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I just want to switch over to the attendees. We had a hand raised for a moment, but I just want to remind all attendees, all planning board and finance committee members, you're welcome to, uh, raise your hand if you have any questions. And bringing it back to the council and chairs of the finance committee, are there any further questions? All right, as always, uh, Administrator Dotay and Finance Director Hunter and all of our department heads, we appreciate the work that's gone into this LCIP presentation. Okay, seeing no panelists or attendees, we'll move to agenda item number two, and thank you, Superintendent Laneless for attending this portion of the meeting. Okay, so item number two is the presentation of the City of Lost and Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for the fiscal year ending in on June 30th, 2020.
Thank you, um, Mr. Mayor, City Council. I am going to attempt to share my screen. I don't do it very often, so everybody keep their fingers crossed. Am I good?
Yeah, it looks great.
Excellent. This is typically a presentation that we would have probably had presented by the city's external independent auditors. With scheduling conflicts and COVID, um, and to review the semi-annual FY21 financial statements. We figured we would start with this workshop, and if there was a need, we could always invite the auditors in if we needed to. So, um, the FY20 uh, comprehensive annual financial report of the CAPR was initially started as one of the first pretty much all remote audits the city and the school department has ever undertaken. You will see the school department is part of the city. And it is included in the financial statements that you see when you see references to general fund, that includes both city and school. I'm pleased to report that the city received an unmodified audit opinion. That means there were, uh, the financials were fairly stated in all material respects. It's also referred to as a clean opinion. You hear that from time to time. And, um, again, as a review, currently, RHR Smith performs the municipal audit. They were on a one-year extension due to COVID-related issues that, um, started mid-March of last year. Their RFP will go out for the next five years worth of, um, audits for the school. So we will, um, may have a different auditor for the FY21 CAFR presentation. I would also like to remind the council that the city's comprehensive annual financial report for FY19 received, um, its 45th year of the Government Finance Officers Association Certification of Excellence in Financial Reporting. We were the first municipality in the state of Maine to get it. And we've been receiving it for 45 years straight. So that's kudos to the entire municipality on that. So, um, the next slide talks about, uh, the revenues, and this is on a budgetary basis. Again, with city and school presented here. There's no real change from the October 20th memo that I circulated other than the fact that this incorporates the school numbers. So, um, in spite of the COVID, uh, hitting mid-March, we did finish the year strong. We were about just shy of a million dollars surplus from what we anticipated. Current real estate tax collections for the current year ended up being about 98% collected. Personal property was a little less at 97% collected. On the screen, um, you will see that the variance is over $2,000. That includes all tax years collections. So the city does not budget for collection of prior year, but we budget for the full current year's tax collection in that year. So you'll see that, um, the variance there. Um, municipal motor vehicle excise tax, again, is another strong year. I think we peaked out actually in FY19, and you're seeing those collections temper. When we look at the semi-anal report at the end of this presentation, you will see we are still going strong, um, with the motor vehicle excise tax. License and permits, um, just a couple of reminders, we did feel the impact of COVID on food licensing that ended up being about $9,000 under budget. And that was offset by other licenses, which includes a lot of the marijuana-related licenses. That is definitely, um, a strong line item there. It was almost $70,000 uh, a budget surplus, and it continues in FY21. The, uh, intergovernmental revenues, again, that includes the school department as well, hence why you see such, um, larger numbers there. Uh, we did have, um, municipal revenue sharing that was above budget and the, um, general assistance aid fell a little bit below budget, which is good, because if that is falling below budget, that means our expenditures are below budget. Because the state only reimburses us 75% of that. So we like that, um, general assistance budget to come under budget on a revenue side of things. Charges for service, um, that was probably the biggest line item that was impacted by COVID. That's all of your, um, parking, vital statistics, all of that, that took a pause during that time period from mid-March to end of June that had a significant impact on that. Fines and forfeitures, um, you will notice that, uh, the parking violations impacted that line item as well, but it was more than mitigated by additional collections with co-enforcement violations. Interest rents and royalties, we were, um, above budget on that. That was primarily due to investment earnings. Like other rates that we saw, we saw those definitely declining rather rapidly towards the last quarter of the fiscal year. We are still seeing rates, um, at very low, uh, the average CD special right now is 0.75% and that's with a jumbo CD. So the rates have not picked up, although with the election behind us, the national election behind us, you are seeing rates start to uptick. So we are posed very well to do our bond sale right before the true impact of those rising interest rates, um, hits. The miscellaneous revenue, we had a surplus as well. That primarily stemmed from selling, uh, surplus property, tax-acquired property. We, um, the purchasing director, um, Alan Ward, has been very active on getting those tax-acquired properties out on the streets and getting those sold so that become taxable parcels for us again. Transfers in, that reflects primarily, um, stormwater, but also water and sewer reimbursing general fund for fringe benefits as well as some legacy debt service for the stormwater fund. So, again, the total revenue source, we were at, um, 131,305 and put us just shy again of a million dollars above budget. On the expenditure side, we were under budget by almost $13 million. You will see, um, total budget city and school with all encumbrances was budgeted at a million 440, um, excuse me, 143,193,600 producing a surplus of $13,141,000. The bulk of the line items here reflects savings and personnel. I, that was a consistent theme throughout all departments, particularly on general government, public safety and public works. And the public safety was more on the police side. So you, we saw savings um, in all three of those departments with personnel services. I also would add, as soon as COVID hit, administration put a spending freeze in place. So that occurred in mid-March. That spending freeze is still being in place as of today. And we are looking at potentially releasing some priority one items. Um, once that list is made and approved by the city administrator, we can look at starting to fund some of those on a selective basis. The, um, one bright spot of COVID, particularly in public safety, is the police department did a lot of outside details. So they provided security and vehicle rentals for, um, the most noted were area banks during that time. So that provided an additional revenue source of about $405,000. So that was a significant, um, positive impact of COVID. You don't hear too many of those. The other benefit that we had last year is winter operations. With it, um, being such a mild winter, we had, um, about $115,000 surplus in winter operations. And then the capital particularly impacts when we freeze spending, it uh, impacts public works the most because they have the highest capital fluctuation. So you will see that surplus of almost a million dollars noted there. Human services, that's your general assistance that we talked about. It came in about $170,000 under budget. We are seeing the expenditures in FY21 increase slightly, but it's still at a manageable pace. Compared to where we are at in the budget. Recreation and library probably were hit hardest with the COVID as far as operational accounts. So you will see, um, they, e- even though we were three quarters of the way through the fiscal year, they still posted very, um, substantial surpluses for those two divisions and function areas, primarily due to shutdown to the public. Intergovernmental, that includes the, um, joint agencies and the county tax. We were about $25,000 over budget, and that was due to a project timing of uh, airport capital project. It was supposed to actually hit in FY19 and it got posted in 20. So you see that, um, that project deficit there. The school side of the house had about, uh, 10.7 million dollars in surplus. Um, so it, it poses them very well for replacing their just shy of $4 million that they were bringing forward to balance the current year budget. And replaces that, that rainy day fund. So it poses them in a good light to move into the FY22 budget. Miscellaneous includes the, um, the fringe benefits as well as, uh, like the tax sharing, some of those, um, odd categories that we see. The, that typically is, uh, the surplus from the health insurance and the pension costs that we did not, they were not as high as projected. Operating transfers out, that reflects our debt service. That's how we have to show it for, um, financial statement presentations. Um, we had $185,000 in surplus that reflects savings on, um, debt interest. The rate that we sold the bonds at last year ended up being a little lower than anticipated. So it produced the surplus. This is probably, this slide and the next slide are probably the two most important slides of this whole presentation. And that talks about fund balance breakdown. That's going into the FY22 budget cycle. This is what is, um, going to allow you as counselors to decide what to do with capital items and gives you greater flexibility on how to fund capital items. So when you look at general funds fund balance, it's broken down into four areas. So we have unexpendable fund balance, which includes prepaid expenditures and inventory, things that we've already paid cash for, we can't liquidate. Restricted fund balance is dedicated for school general fund surplus. Um, it's restricted because the municipal side can't really touch it. It's dedicated for school education purposes. Assigned fund balance is just what it says. We've assigned them to different categories. So it could be for encumbrances. It could be for workers' compensation, unemployment compensation, and then encumbrances as well. We will see this fluctuate a little bit, particularly at the end of FY20 because a lot of our employees did not take vacation time. So that assigned fund balance, as you note there in the, in the green, increased substantially because of encumbrances and those balances, um, rising because the staff and employees, and that was on both city and school, um, did not take the normal vacation time that they had coming to them. Which leaves our unassigned fund balance. That's the city's piece and, and to borrow what Mayor Kair and I were talking about, the rainy day fund, um, as you hear in the news. Right now, you will see that that rose by about $2.6 million. So this is how it plays out going into the FY22 budget. We concluded the FY20 year very strong um, in spite of COVID and, and some of the other obstacles we had to deal with. We plan to draw $5.7 million of fund balance. So when we approve the budget, you know, that list of projects that we say is that are going to be funded through fund balance? That's the draw that we anticipated. So we expected that to be $5.7 million. We all actually added $5.8 million. So it's a 17% increase. So that is a very strong year. It's going to be looked at very favorably by the rating agency when we talk to them next week. Um, and in anticipation of the bond sale that's coming up. The school department was replace, able to replace, um, all of their $3.9 million that they used to balance the current FY21 budget. And then we also, um, council approved a fund balance policy. And just to remind the counselors what that policy says, we have a floor of 8%. And it's 8% of revenues and, and transfers. So our floor would be $11,410,000. The ceiling is 12%. And again, it's 12% of that same number. So our ceiling is $17,115,000. Right now, we are sitting at 4.38%, our 20, 20.5 million dollars. So it poses us very well going into the FY22 budget. It allows the, um, I think Councilor Khalid asked about how we get that, um, the bond project authorization down to that 80% limit. This provides you with greater flexibility. You still get to choose which projects you want to fund. And we still have to go through the budgetary process to see if there's anything we want to move out of the operating budget into this. But it gives us some significant, um, flexibility to do that. And for a while there, we were really concerned whether we were going to have that flexibility. We didn't know how the tax payments were going to come in. We didn't know about revenue sharing and some of those other, um, questionable items. And this at least, uh, at least gives us some comfort level going into this budget. The last two line items on this slide allow us to kind of look at the surplus over the max, that's over the 12% is almost $4 million. Typically, the last, um, this current council and the previous council like to hover right around that 10% three sweet spot of fund balance. That provides us about $6,250,000 to work with. So again, um, this is probably the most important slide. I would be happy to send this out to you electronically. So you can refer to this, um, but, but this is, this is a critical slo- slide for you making financial decisions. And I'm very pleased that it's as positive as it is. And I'm very pleased that it's as positive as it is ending this, ending FY20. So looking at the utilities. This is kind of a snapshot, again, getting ready for the FY22 budget. We had the water department that increased net position by $727,000. And by increasing that position, that's kind of like saying what their surplus was. Sewer department was at $914,000 and stormwater was at $881,000. We talk a lot about projected cash flows and cash flows during the budget. Because that's what dictates whether a rate increase will be needed. So when we looked at the FY21. Projected cash flows and tried to predict what the ending cash balance would be as of June 30th, 2020. You will see that top line is what we predicted the cash balance to be. And then you will see the next line, the actual clash is where we ended up. So in all three cases, we are above what we projected, which again, that's a very positive thing. I don't think it's going to be high enough, particularly in the water department. To provide, to afford us the opportunity to forego rate increase in water. I will see how the budgets play out, but I'm still very concerned about bypassing a rate increase in that fund. Because again, PUC likes to look at the fact that the water operations, the receipts are covering. Their water operations, and right now we can't say that. So again, that's kind of a little caveat to the, the positive conclusion of FY20 with the utilities. Workers' comp and unemployment. We've talked about workers' comp in past year-end presentations. About what we needed for reserves and what our shortfall looked like. You can see unfortunately, the shortfall increased by about $320,000 this year. And part of that will be made up in the current year, or I anticipate. Because one, we had contributions increase. The other thing is our workers' comp cases right now are very, very low with people working remotely. So we are, again, another small benefit of COVID. And so I'm hoping that that spread between the reserves and the financial. Capital we have available will decrease for FY21. Unemployment is a new graph as part of this presentation. Normally, it's not an issue, and I went back to show you why it's not an issue in this graph. You will see back in, in 2016, we had enough reserves in cases to cover us. For any potential unemployment issues. Right now, you will see, we peaked out at $28,000 this year in 19. And then we bottomed out in 20. So we went from $28,000 in reserves for unemployment down to $5,000. That happened directly related to the changes in unemployment law related to COVID. The, we are, we, the city is self-insured for unemployment. We had to pay our part-timers and our temporary employees. That was a change in the, with the CARES Act and the COVID funding. And it caused us a substantial expenditure in unemployment that we are going to have to look at. Boosting in this year's budget to increase reserves back up again. So that's, this is a kind of a precursor to that budgetary line item in FY22. Right now, looking at, this is the semi-annual results for FY21. So this is where we stand as of December. It's kind of hot off the press, if you will. It shows you your comparative that we normally do right now. Total revenues were at $41,629,000, or were about 59% collected, which is good. Last year, we were at $39,347,000 or 55% collected. So from a comparative overall standpoint, we are doing better than this time last year. Some of the, again, the collections for taxes are right where there should be. We're right at the 57% mark. Tax bills for the second half are going out this week, so that'll help with cash flows and collections. I think we'll actually have a better collection rate this year. Because part of the issue we had last year is we didn't send the 30-day delinquent notices, because that's right when COVID hit. And that would have been right at April 15th. So people did not realize, for whatever reason, they didn't pay their taxes until they got the lien notice in gym. We're not going to do that this year. We rely on that from a collectibility. And I think it made a huge difference in collections from that standpoint. Licensing, you can see we're trailing a little bit above budget right now. Again, the biggest issue is that other licensing for the marijuana and grow operations. It is providing some significant revenue to the city. Enter governmental revenues, that's revenue sharing for us. Right now, we are 85% collected. We reduced the FY21 budget by a million dollars because we were not sure what was going to happen at the state level. And right now, it does not seem to have impacted the state as much as we thought. We brought a million, I think it was $1,650,000 forward in the FY21 budget to balance the budget. Because of rough and shortfalls, we will not have to use that to balance this budget, or at least because of this reason. Charges for service, even though they are at 56%. We are still having issues with anything, parking, parking meter, daily parking, monthly parking. All of that stuff with the remote operations is still having trouble with collectibility. Interest in rents and royalties, again, that's, that's trending pretty well. We significantly reduce the interest earning budget in the, the amount in the budget. So hopefully, we'll at least meet budget with that. I anticipate the rents in the parking garage. And hopefully, we'll keep pace even as we continue through this process. And hopefully, the parking meters and so forth will catch up with the budget as. Hopefully, COVID turns around and the spring and summer comes out. Miscellaneous, we're about $37,000 short. That's pretty much the exact amount of the MMA dividend payment that we normally receive. We did not receive that this year. I think MMA is keeping that and holding the insurance premiums constant. And they're using that as, as their reserves in order to do that. So that kind of is a summary of what we talked about. And again, I can send this council, this presentation out for council to refer to and ask me any more detailed questions. But on the expenditure side, you will see we are doing just as well. We're about 48% expended. We're running a little less than last year, and, but again, the, the budget is less than last year. General Government did very well with the COVID grants. Between the election grant, the Keep Maine Healthy Grant, those paid for a lot of general government. Positions and operations and so forth, so we had some savings there. MIS did have to spend some money on capital and so forth, so that particular function is trending a little higher. Likewise, human resources is trending a little bit higher with some of the testing and medical services. Public safety, you will see, is higher than last year, and they're about 55% expended. That's personnel-related costs that we're seeing that as well as. There was a timing payment of the hydrant, fire hydrant rental charged by the water department. Normally, that doesn't sound like a significant issue, but their quarterly payments are $184,000. So it, it did play a role in here. I'm pleased to see, as you will see in that, Human Services, that's our general assistance line item. Again, we're watching that closely. They've had an uptick in emergency client needs. But we're still trending less than where we should be from a budget standpoint. So that is good. It's more than last year, though, but, but it's still kind of holding its own. Recreation, Library, those operations are still seeing some lag because of the COVID and the closures. Debt Service is pretty much on par for where we are in this budget. Most of our debt service payments fall in the second half of the fiscal year to get us fully collected in our taxes. Enter governmental, again, that's the joint ventures. Most of our agencies, and particularly with the county tax, that's prepaid. So that's why that percentage at 76% is above the 50% mark. I will let you know, we are going to have about a $40,000 deficit in the county tax. We were provided with preliminary numbers, and I'm not sure what happened. I know our chief assessor had to actually call the county to get the final county tax bill. When he was doing his state certification for his valuations and so forth. And the amount that we had as preliminary was truly a preliminary number and not the final number. So we have a $40,000 shortfall in that particular area. We over-budgeted for the Transit Committee because we weren't sure how much of the CARES money was going to be brought forward. So I'm fully comfortable, we will make up that money with the transit budget. But that one was kind of a surprise that was unanticipated. And again, right now, the miscellaneous, that reflects a lot of the fringe benefits. That's trailing pretty much where it should be at this point in the fiscal year. So that's kind of a quick snapshot of where we're at right now. I, I, overall, you know, all things considered, if you would have asked me if we would have finished the year. And been at this point on a six-month basis, when COVID first started, I would have said no. But, you know, it's definitely takes, it gives us some breathing room going into the budget.
If you could drop your screen for us.
Yes, um, let's see if I can do that. Stop share. There we go.
So I, I, I have to say, that was pretty impressive, that report. We are, I, I, I mean, it feels like we are doing so much better than we were hoping. Now with the higher and freezing place, and I real, so there's some consideration to relaxing it a little bit. But I would assume that will be a very cautious approach administrative.
Right now, even though there's a hiring freeze, most of the positions that have turned over have been critical positions. So we have not frozen those particular positions, particularly in Public Works. Because we need to have staff there for snow removal and plowing and so forth. What has been frozen is the capital components. So now, what I've asked all the departments to do, I think toward mid-last week. Go through everything that's been kind of on hold and tell me what your first priorities were going to be. And let's see how much that, that costs. And then that way, we can start releasing some of those funds ever so slowly. And still not get behind the eight ball of where we need to be for capital repairs and so forth within our departments.
Yeah, and you know, so my quick thought is, you know, we had a very slight reduction in property taxes for our community last year. Point two, 24 cents, I believe. And obviously, going into the next budget, that all comes back into play. Because, you know, we just don't know what the level of service that we're going to be expected to provide. It would really be nice if there was a buffer so that, you know, we didn't take away. Everything that we, you know, provided the community property tax pay. So that's just my own personal opinion. And I hope the council, you know, considers that as we move forward. City Administrator Dotay, did you want to add anything to, to what Heather just stated about the higher increase?
No, I think, I think she really covered it well. I'd just simply say, I mean, to answer your question, yes. I mean, I think we're going to be cautious still with releasing this in any of these funds. I think Heather, excuse me, Director Hunter, she, she provided a very good, I think, breakdown of the process that we will go through. And we're just gonna, we're gonna have to look at these very carefully. We're not, we're not out of the woods. Certainly, as Heather said, it feels good where we are. I think that, I also just, you know, I think commend her and her staff. And honestly, the, all, all staff, I mean, really have pulled in the same direction. They've been very good to work with through this. This has not been an easy year already in the terms of a spending freeze and curtailments and that. And it does make it difficult, but as Director Hunter said, we're positioned well now. And I think that we can start to work through that, and, and I think that's why we do this. And I think it was the right approach for us. And, you know, and I, and I'm pleased with the outcome, and we will be careful as we move forward to ensure we don't undo what we've just done.
Right, thank you. Counselor Ray and then Counselor Clement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I mean, the screen was up, so you probably couldn't see both of my eyebrows go up hard. When we talked about the county tax bill. Is that the budget that we just decided this past fall? That was different from what was anticipated?
It would have been a year ago.
Okay, so the increase from a year ago was?
And I think we normally get that paper right, right in mid-March, April. After the valuations and everything are solidified, that is right when all of the closings started and everything else. I'm not sure if it just was a mishap related to COVID. Because, you know, that's the first time that I've had that experience since I've been here. So I'll relate it to that. It's unfortunate it happened, but, you know, we'll be looking for it much more closely this year. To make sure it doesn't happen again, and we do have, you know, a buffer to, to provide for that.
Okay, and just for everyone to know, the county budget came to the committee and the county commission this year. With something like a 4% increase, we got it down to like 0.23%. So hopefully, that's a lot easier to work around. My second question was, is it possible for either the city administrator or finance director to share a list of the current vacancies? I know we just had one pop up in Recreation. I'm just curious where our staffing levels are throughout. If there has been a lot of turnover, I guess.
No, I don't have the list right in front of me. I would, I mean, we certainly could follow up. I think I'd be more comfortable with really looking at. I mean, I don't think we've had a ton of movement, but I understand, well, just to give you an accurate list, we could certainly follow up with, I think. A full list and an email to, to the council to give you that update.
That would be awesome. And then, sorry, I've got two more. Is, are we looking at, well, realizing that the new news is that herd immunity won't come out till the end of 2021? Are we looking at options for continued work from home in an effort to both meet needs of employees? But also keep that workers' comp lower?
Yeah, so we are, what we're doing right now under the current situation is we're, we're continuing this and evaluating every few weeks. In terms of the situation, I think, going on in the community. So currently, the, the numbers are not trending in the right way, as we all know, to certainly take us out of this mode. So I think for the foreseeable, you know, at least the next, you know, few to several weeks, we're going to be in, in the same. Working from home, rotating schedules that we've been in, and we'll just continue to assess it. And obviously, I, I think overall, the sentiment frankly is, is, you know, generally that staff are looking to get back to nor, normal schedules. As we all are, but we are going to, very similar to the mayor's question and response, I think we're just going to approach with caution and be very. You know, calculated and strategic about, you know, returning them back and making sure that those numbers are trending in the right way. So to answer your question, long answer, but yes, I mean, we are going to stay in it, but it's evaluated on an ongoing basis. It's just not indefinite.
Okay, and similarly, on slide four, we were talking about the fund balance, about vacation time. I guess it would be interesting, I don't know if we want to do this exercise, but I'm, I'm assuming there's caps on accumulation for each position. But what might be a worst-case scenario if everyone tries to take four weeks next year or something? I'm not sure what that would look like, just trying to get a sense of. Just trying to get a sense of what that might look like for us. I don't expect an answer to that now. I'm just curious if we could envision that.
I think it, it, the, where it's going to play out the most is, or at least on the city side, is for those bargaining units that have the retirement health savings vacation option in their collective bargaining agreement. I think you're going to see a bump in that budgetary line item for next year because people are actually reaching the threshold where vacation time will be pulled. And don't forget that that compensated absence, that also included the school side. And I think the school department allowed, and you would probably know better, whether they were allowed to go above their balances or their caps. But they had almost a $400,000 increase in, in vacation balances.
Okay, I'm not sure off the top of my head, but I can dig into that with Ms. Avery.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Clement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I concur with what you had to say about moving cautiously. I am a bit void after listening to Director Hunter this evening. I expected there was going to be a lot more doom and gloom than what we had. I think kudos to her and the finance department for managing, managing us so expertly for the past year. It certainly has not been an easy year, as you and I discussed earlier today. We are not out of the woods. I think somebody just said, perhaps the administrator. But neither are we in a deep hole that we need to find ourselves climbing out of. So with that, I would just ask that the Director of Finance, perhaps electronically forward me that PowerPoint, and perhaps to the rest of the finance committee as well. As we delve into LCIP, it's going to be a learning process for all of us again this year. It started out one way last year, ended up another, and I don't know as we know where we are right now, but let's hope that this is going to be a better year. And with that, I say thank you and congratulations to our finance department for keeping us on an even keel. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Jelena.
Good, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I would just concur. Really great job. Director Hunter, your report was great, just awesome to go over this stuff. I would love a copy of the PowerPoint as well. And then as I was looking at, we were talking about like hires and staffing, and I was looking at table number 11 in the booklet that you gave us, the, you know, the financial, the comprehensive annual financial report. And I don't know if this is a typo or what, but as I
Yes, it is. I know, yes, exactly. I know exactly which one you're referring. It's 80.5.
Okay. Big jump. All right, thank you.
And yes, I'll send out the presentation to everybody. And, and Counselor Clement, I appreciate your, your acknowledgement. But it's all the department heads that pulled together on this, not just me.
Counselor Clement.
You know, the magic mute button again. Yeah, I appreciate that, Director. And also to Counselor Jelena, she found the one mistake that you apparently put in there specifically for somebody to catch. And I think that's, that's good work on her part as well, so.
Nobody's found the knock-knock joke yet.
It is great that we still have some sense of humor after what we've been through for this past year anyway. Congratulations all.
Thank you for sharing that. And thank all consulates for their comments tonight. This was a good meeting. It was a pleasure to have the planning board and finance committee join us on a Zoom meeting. And I actually think it went really well. So thank you to staff because I know Dale was stressing because of the number of attendees. But as always, as always, he pulled it off without a blip. So councilors, much appreciate all of you. And if there are no further questions, we'll end this workshop. All right.